I think we have our votes. All right, that's all. She'll give it.
Okay, thank you. You can open the August 17, 2022 Select Board Meeting at 6:04 PM. Do you have any amendments to the agenda tonight? I just have one, a small thing. The community bank just needs authorization to allow Krista Peck to be added to the Woken Cemetery Association CD checking and savings account. If you're not aware, the Cemetery Association in July voted to dissolve itself and transfer all its assets to the Cemetery Commissioners. The Commissioners are a town account. So the bank just needs written approval authorizing that. If the board make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to authorize the transfer.
One second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Thank you. Right, approval of the minutes on August 3rd.
We'd like to approve the August 3rd meeting.
One second.
I'll second.
So do we have any corrections, additions, deletions? Carry on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Comments from the community?
Go ahead.
Yeah. This is not about anything.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter.
It can be anything.
Yeah.
My name is Brian Spalt of ALB. I think we spoke.
Yes, we did.
But I am at 1788 Town Hill Road. And my house, which is a schoolhouse, is fairly close to the road. And this has been going on for several summers, but it seems to me to have gotten worse, which is that the dust from the traffic when, when there's, you know, no rain or very little rain is really extreme. And I never ever open the windows on the west side of my house. And the dust completely enters and settles everywhere. And I'm concerned because I think it's a health hazard. They, there was a, one, at least one time since I've been here, and I've been here through June, July, and now August, that I remember the truck coming by and what?
Chloride.
The chlorides, yeah, put down. That helped.
Yes.
But it didn't help for very long.
Yeah.
And it really is a concern. I mean, I'm assuming that if it's going to land everywhere, then the animal side, the occupants, not just for me, but for other residents. And Town Hill at this point is a very trafficked road, as I'm sure you know. But I don't understand how this can be changed, but I really do believe it needs to be changed, the situation. Change to be more chlorine? I guess so. I don't know. It just feels to me like it's, it's, at this point, it's, it's really a kind of hazard.
Yeah. And I think, you know, this year, as we discussed on the phone, it's, we've had some real dry spells.
Yes.
And, and in combination with that, we have a shortage of chloro. And actually, chlorine comes up on the tree. And so all of the towns kind of bid for that chloro at the same time. And this year, we've, we just received a filling for chloro. Early in the season, we didn't have any at all. Now, they've been up there once, the juror were.
The handle.
Yeah. And the, the roads, dirt roads are dusty. They are. And chloro is really the only thing we can do to mitigate that, other than more rain. That helps a lot. And this year, it's really been, it's been a pretty dry year. But I think the answer really is, you know, getting back on a regular routine with the chloro.
Which would be?
Well, they do it, they do it when they grade. So they grade the roads and then chloro it to come right back to grading. Because the grading really makes the festival. That's when it's really bad.
Yeah.
They have to be graded. So, so we come right after grading. Now, we had two grading cycles early this year where we didn't have any for us. We now do. And I think that what, what are the things that some other residents have done? Because we're certainly not the only, not with this concern.
Yeah.
We've had some others.
Both of them.
Yeah, that have horses and so forth close to the road, you're concerned. So what they do is we kind of do a, kind of a directed chloro run. So if it's particularly dusted, dusty somewhere, we can direct the road crew to do that small section. So that's, that's really kind of the game plan.
So are you saying that I would have to call and ask if you have it done?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it'll be done regularly. But I would think that if you find that it's, you know, just getting dusty and we're not in our regular cycle.
Yeah.
Then yeah, you can call.
Will you be getting more chloro? Is that a temporary problem?
It's a supply chain problem that occurred during COVID. And it's getting better. Yeah, it is getting better. We now do have chloro. We have, we have a big, huge tank back here for it. It's not, it's expensive stuff. And so part of what the road manager does is watch the, he watches the dollars and cents as well. So sometimes it's easier if there's a particular area where there's a concern.
I seem to be in a very bad area.
Yeah.
And, and, but it's not only this year. It's been very consistent throughout.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's dirt roads.
Yeah. But unfortunately, the house is fairly close to the road. So that's the solution. And how often do you do grading twice in the summer?
Oh, no, that's, it'd be about four times.
Four times?
During the summer, yeah.
Summer meaning June, July, August?
Yeah, June, July, August, even Sept- in September.
Okay.
Even in September.
Perfect. Okay, so I will just.
So I think that's probably the best way to handle it right now. It's.
And there is no other solution. I mean, obviously, I don't want to see roads that are cemented or whatever. It'd be horrible.
We can't afford to take them.
No. It's also, there's something wonderful about that.
Yeah. But so I think that is the solution. At higher places.
Okay.
You can always call me.
Okay.
And you can also, Dylan is our road manager.
Dylan.
Dylan.
Okay.
He's not easy to get ahold of because he's out on the road most of the time. So the best thing to do is to go through me or just call his office. And Belinda will leave the message.
And just give Belinda a message to reach you?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. So I'm here for most weekends.
Most weekends?
Yeah. Not all, but most. These are the reasonable solutions.
Well, that would be helpful. Other than I guess their homes, though.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you're right about the other thing is the town to go root has become much more, much busier. It's a, it's become a bit of a connector route.
I know.
And, yeah, and, you know, with some of the growth we've had over the past year or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you really feel it.
Yeah. And I want to ask another question that's.
Yep.
Not about the, the dust. It's inside here and that as well. And that is, there, I remember a year ago, I did call up about the way that people are riding on that road, especially in the morning. It just barrel down, barrel up in the evening. And there is a sign that is a traffic indicator.
Yeah, speed sign.
The speed sign is very, to me, is illogically placed.
Oh, was the one that's on Town Hill?
Yeah.
It is, oh, yeah. I think.
I totally agree. I noticed there isn't even a speed sign there.
Yeah.
To tell you why your speed should be.
Exactly.
I, I noticed that the other day.
But why isn't it placed where there are no, there's, it's beyond residential areas? Where I am and up above me, it's very residential in terms.
Yeah.
People who are.
It, you're, you're right. I think this word agrees with you that that was placed some years back.
Yeah.
It is, it's not illogical place. The difficulty is that it's, it's hardwired in there. You know, so it's, it's cemented in and there's a, a solar system that's connected to it. So moving it is, I mean, it's.
You might as well buy a new one.
Might buy a new one, right.
That was a grant the sheriff's department, the previous board picked that spot.
Well, how can, I mean, we should probably have another one up higher.
Yeah.
Because when I called originally, it probably was several years ago, that was, it was placed there asked. And I've never understood why it was placed down.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We can look for grants. I don't know how much they cost. I mean, we can put that out there when we're.
We have a meeting with the sheriffs next week. We can bring it up.
Would you? That would be very helpful, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think we, did we put a mobile sign up by your place a couple of years ago or a year ago or something? No. Because we do get, we do get the speeding complaint on Town Hill.
Yeah, that's awful.
It's not, it's, it's everybody.
Yeah.
So the sheriff has a portable radar sign. And we put one up in that area about a year ago. But that's another thing we can do kind of on a temporary basis. Because they would do that on request. They don't leave it there forever. I mean, they will do it.
Okay. I mean, if, if there's anywhere I can help with the foundation grants.
Well, we'll talk to Michael on all this. Good. We meet him next Thursday. Good. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone online have comments for the community?
Star six two. Let, hold on, star six dot mute.
He's trying to. They don't need some.
Carry on. Those will want to.
There is.
I, I have no comments. I'm just listening. I couldn't get down there tonight. So no comments. Thank you.
All right.
We will want to correspondence again. I noticed that we're meeting with the Lowell County Sheriff's Department Thursday, August 25th at 5:00 learning at the sheriff's department. All the wards invited. And received the monthly July report from the sheriff's department. I'll pass that around. People to look at. That's all I have for correspondence.
I can also add that for speeding on that road, local citizens can call the sheriff and ask for directed control.
Directed?
Directed control. And that is just. And that is speed control. Now, the sheriff is really thinly spread between Hyde Park, Johnson, and Woken. So you don't expect it to be a patrol car sitting there on the corner, but they will come around.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want, Bruce, do you want us to roll our agenda up focusing your ear? Or if I'm waiting?
Sure, if you want. Yeah, we can move it.
So is it all right for the rest of the board to be, um, the board is being pressed for a moment opportunity on the agenda before the project managers' report? Before it proves?
Yes.
Are you going to present? Do you want to present?
Wasn't prepared to present, but I'm sure it answered the question.
Okay.
Yeah, so, right, so. You know, Bruce has been kind enough to fill in with the next project. As, you know, we don't have a representative right now. And in the process, they do need to kind of uncover an opportunity that is being presented by Grassbury. In which they are working on a, a plan which might give them service up to Town Hill Road. And are using the, our funds as to partially pay for it. And there is an opportunity through our, and through the neck road and to join, for Woken to join in. And as I understand it, Bruce has been a lot more with this than I am. But I'll tell you what I do know and what I don't know. One is it'll serve I think it was 14 that are considered to be, you know, high need. This is homes with students in it and so forth, or people that have fellow health issues. And it sounds to me like Bruce, it goes to 40 spots. Is that right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
I didn't see the numbers of how many. There's a map that shows each individual house.
Right.
And places that were taken with, uh, laying on every house. That's all. I think you're on one.
Yeah.
What does he do that? I think forty-five.
Forty-five premises and 40 are priority.
Okay.
And as far as I understand it now, I'm really not clear on it. This extension would come downtown Woken.
Yes. And so I think the map shows the extension going from Grassbury, from the line down to Town Hill Road. So we call that across the crossroad around East Hill. I think that's what it covers, but if you have the map there, it's probably.
Yeah, and that, oh, so that's crossroad there. It's not the other part of East Hill.
No, okay.
Back to here?
Who's there?
You want to hear?
No, obviously. The reason they're doing it, as I understand it, is that if they need the rain in a backbone, initially, they probably have, if marketing has to be, for those areas, will make them get filled in. And they're using the art of funds to help support that backbone. I see this as a real opportunity to get coverage early. The coverage will come possibly much later for those that don't have this opportunity now. And to mention the funding triples. So we're looking at three dimes, $57,000 that we would put in.
Well, so the town looks in 57.
Right.
I'm hard on mine.
Yep.
And then the, the other two-thirds come from.
I, I had some ones to write, but probably two different places. Thinking of the Communications Board.
ECPB? Yes, right, I see.
So it's, yeah, ECP managed funds.
Right. So really, the commitment to the town's art of funds would be $53,000.
You're getting $101,000, $7,000 worth of profit early.
Yeah. And so one of my questions was, I don't know if you can answer it, is when this report indicates there'll be early delivery, how early is that? Is it?
I, I don't know. I hope for this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Maybe this year? Could be this year?
That would be my guess. I'll, I'll look it up.
Because as I understand it, they're trying to build out their, their hub. I'm probably not using the right words here.
Spurs. Oh, is it a spur?
This is, this would be one of the spurs, right? But they also need their own, wherever their base center is. And it sounds like if this, if Grassbury can do this, then they can build out that, that base, which allows this spur to occur.
No, it also sounds like Brian, and I'm sure his last name, has been communicating with us. And he's from Grassbury, looking for some encouragement as well.
Yeah.
For Woken. So, you know, if he decides to do it, and he says, well, Woken really needs, wants to have this, then it sounds like he's maybe working with the craft from the angle of the study.
Yeah. Now, is he on the board? Is he on the board or is he?
I don't think he is.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Because this letter actually came from Krista.
Krista.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be so confused when I may have confused. Because it sounds like a good opportunity, good use of our funds. But I would, I think that the board probably should have a meeting, Krista, or is it Brian?
Brian would just be looking for support. I don't think he would. He would be, Krista, she's probably very busy, but certainly she could reply with more information if we need that. I can, I can get more details as well. There's another, the advantage of that is that it gives high-speed internet backbone to a couple of really strategic places in town, the high places. So we have fiber lines in Woken. Well, it really doesn't do in terms of wireless communications. So if you were to try and expand the wireless using the high-speed fiber, Woken, you just can't reach these areas. This would give us early on high-speed broadband to fiber to Town Hill and East Hill. And the coverage from there, using some pretty straightforward small wireless towers could be possible on an interim basis. That's how they get fiber to the rest of the town. And that will be quite a while. So I see there's an opportunity to do mobile and external wireless as well as.
I have been receiving numerous phone calls from people up in that area that work from home.
Yeah.
That are just frustrated.
I did talk to Diane.
Yeah.
Again the other day. I do not understand that. Cloud Alliance should serve her. Cloud Alliance took in a lot of money two years ago.
Right.
To cover areas. It should cover my house as well, heaven or earth, and from, they, they had John rolling it out. They, I heard they had an extension. This is a bit hearsay. But Diane says that they, they, she talks to the towers that be. And Cloud Alliance will stop by and say, well, no, it just doesn't work here. But other people in the area have. It's, it just seems like perhaps Cloud Alliance needs to get in here and give her coverage. But that's, to be fair, it might be. Now, there is, in addition to all that, the state has allocated funds for 50 macro towers for mobile coverage. And mobile coverage also means the home coverage.
Right.
Like Crystal, I'm trying to hybride, Christina, has AT&amp;T wireless, which you have at your home. But a lower of the 2% at home. So if you've got wireless, you've got home, you're standing, old coverage. They, they, I gotta know, asking could they put a tower on some adjacent land? My brothers and Orin Youngs in that area. I don't, my guess is that that's just not possible, given the length of everything that would be needed to serve that. However, in that conversation, I had a call from a gentleman that has land upon the hill east of East Hill, that Big Town Hill outside Potter's Hill. And he was looking to lease his land to one of the tower folks. So this guy was chasing around, trying to find a tower location. And this was in the works. I hadn't thought of it for a couple of months to see if it's going to happen. But that could give Woken excellent wireless coverage from a very high spot. So if things are in the works.
Would you recommend this proposal?
Yes. And I just, my thought is, September 15th is a key deadline day on this. And I, I would just love to just have a short conversation and answer just a couple of questions about coverage, where exactly it goes. What's the best guess that anticipated is where it is? The financial side, I understand. I assume this is standard fiber rates. This would be like 50/50? 50 up, 50 down?
Oh, I'm not sure. Oh, um, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what it will make out, but this is, this is a wide type of models. Um, it'll be a gigabyte, gigabit per second before you know it. But certainly a hundred, hundred.
I was just looking at the subscription rates for the end user.
Yeah.
It looks like, uh, about eighty dollars.
Right. Is that fifty?
Fifty.
Okay, so they're giving different rates here.
Yeah, it's gonna get my, it's one.
Um, it's expensive.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Well, if you just have phone, I mean, internet, no phone, like the church does. It, it's, um, seventy-five dollars a month just for the internet.
No, it's competitive rates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the prices will come down. I mean, the, the industry is just forming, uh, the wireless industry especially. And forty, fifty dollars a month will happen within a year or two. I assume, I mean, the prices will come down in the service. Maybe not through any K, but, uh, through markets.
And is Priscilla the best person to argue for this?
Yeah, I can chase that down as long and correspond.
That would be fantastic.
My, my keyboard developed, any keys that work, few years ago, it's like, yeah, it doesn't work in here. It's not, it's gonna start maybe on the, yes, I'll chase that down and give that to you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I think this is usually very interesting. I just have not been a part of the, this board and not having followed it that quickly.
Yeah.
It, I did, I, I thought the, the, the ability to just have some questions answered would be much more reassuring.
No, I'm sure she would, probably someone else. Um, I was following the, uh, model fiber net more than I was the any K. I'll be, well, since any K would be doing all the power work. I'll be following, unless, well, let's change my mind. I'll be following any K. Everything is, is quite hurting memory during place and one, one, they could do.
I think that's right.
So what would be on the agenda for next meeting?
Hopefully between now and next meeting, we can get some of these questions answered. Um, because why don't we use the September fifteenth date in mind?
Right.
Yeah.
I'll chase it down.
You don't think she would zoom to one of these to ask questions?
Uh, there, there is this, the main issue in this is especially I just answering all kinds of questions. I'm sure. You know, for something to, this question, probably this is important.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Bruce.
You're welcome.
Good work.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I brought. Get home for a range.
So that's the project being in the board.
Someone abbreviated it before, uh, so North Star Electric, um, has given both twenty-four hundred dollars to run our to the new overhead heater and to fix the overhead lights in the garage. Um, the garage is not, um, it has two banks of lights that are completely out. And it's something with the circuitry, so needs to be taken care of. Um, Born's, uh, as you remember, uh, we did sign a contract for propane at one point nine five three oh gallon, which was really an excellent price. That goes through, uh, for, uh, uh, end of April twenty twenty-four. The heating oil has been a different problem. We have been without a heating oil contract uh, since May. Um, and because of the volatility in the market, Born's really could not quote a, um, a fixed contract. Um, so I've been going, staying on top of that as the market changes, um, as prices for oil have uh, gone, there's been reduction in the price. Um, so they are proposing right now four dollars and twenty-nine cents a gallon. Um, or we can stick with where we are right now, which is just pay rack prices. And so the question to the board really is, um, signing a contract um, for four dollars and twenty-nine cents as opposed to paying rack price. Uh, and it, and I, I guess the question is, do we think the prices are gonna continue to go down? Now, Born's is not saying that we'll lock in at any time. Um, they're saying if we need oil, they're gonna charge us rack. If we want to get into a contract, they'll do it, and it will be at four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Now, maybe two months from now, it'll be four dollars, I don't know, or it'll be five dollars. And that's the question for the board.
So before in our contract, we didn't have a fixed price, we had like three samples below rack. Was our, our contract before, wasn't it?
I, I'm not sure. Do it into that, is that right?
Well, I, I, I think that, uh, if you look at a bunch of oil bills, it, it fluctuates. But it always was below in a rack by a certain amount of. Personally, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. I'd like to, I have a feeling that it might go down a little, but I'd like to.
Well, I can verify, I can call Born's and verify that that was the case, that we were paying a percentage below rack. And is that still available? Um, I can't ask him if they anticipate the price.
Okay. They've been back some more information.
All right, and, um, so for the truck, um, we finally got a trade in twenty-five thousand dollars first. And um, so that has now been confirmed and the loan and paperwork has been prepared. And we're ready for, unless there's any objection to the trade in.
Well, the highway department had me with it?
Oh, yeah, I think, yes.
Okay.
Um.
So that's just the truck, no, the sender, not the plow?
Right, just the truck, yeah. Yeah. I think it's higher than they just paid, higher than the rent just paid. So I would propose moving forward with, um, getting the paperwork done and, and closing.
Okay.
And, um, CAI mapping, um, listeners got together with CAI and, um, there was a number of historical maps that CAI wanted. And the listeners have been shipping them back and forth, so this is well in motion now. Um, so with the painting, uh, replacement boards are in place, they're on the side of the garage. And we're ready for paint. And the, the road crew has picked up their color and gets ready to go.
What did they pick?
Well, they had a choice. They wanted blue with white paint. So Nathan put a couple of samples on, uh, on the garage itself, and I decided we'll, and they picked one of those, I don't know which one they picked. And finally, this is just a, a note that the litter committee, um, because this has an effect on the transfer station, is in the process of looking at a proposal for textile collection. Uh, the objective of this would be permanent, um, depository up at the transfer station, where clothing and shoes and all of that kind of.
Stock animals.
And I'll keep you up to date on how that proposal's going.
Thank you.
Is that one, Alan, okay?
Well, is he have allergies?
I don't know if he has allergies, he may have a cold.
Oh.
I'm sure.
All right, let's move on to the transportation's tires, um. Melinda put together a list of what our car prices for the different sizes were. And then also, um, what the hauler is charging us, so we need to make a a decision tonight on how we're gonna move forward with these at the transfer station. Do you wanna just charge the same amount as the hauler's price? Do you wanna charge a dollar above that or?
Yeah, I think firstly, I think a dollar above.
Uh-huh.
Um, so it says seventeen twice, oh, both greater than.
No, we have.
Yes, so that should be and that already is a head. Lower than seventeen is could be nine dollars.
Right.
With rims, nine dollars.
No, this is the problem with the rims, it doesn't specify which tire. I think you're just gonna have to say with rims add two dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I know what makes sense.
Because you, you have your two different car tires and your truck.
Right.
And as well as tractor, uh, tractor trailer.
The tractors, we have to really add a component there.
Hmm.
Um.
Well, they're fairly heavy treaded. So you, you could be talking anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five pound tire.
Yeah, I'm just surprised, I mean, we're only charging ten dollars. The hauler is forty dollars.
So we have lawnmower five.
Yeah.
Um, car tire seventeen six.
Yeah.
Car tire over seventeen nine.
Yeah.
With rims.
Add two.
So that would be ten.
Well, no, it depends on what size tire, Linda.
So are they just charging us eight dollars for rim itself?
No, no, but what they were doing before was saying a car tire with a rim. But now we have two different sizes.
Okay, so.
So I think we have to just say add two dollars to that tire.
With a tire with rims, additional two dollars.
Right.
Tractor trailer sixteen, tractors forty-one, and truck sixteen.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that? We'll make this effective on September first? Or might as well make it effective today?
Well, we gotta change the sign again. We can just get an overlay sign, thanks.
Or you can use post-it for now, just put over what you have for prices now. Duct tape, duct tape. You can get duct tape in any color now.
Yeah. Well, if I could now.
So effective July seventeen.
August seventeen.
August second. So are those in, uh, do we have a motion? These purses?
Yeah, uh, so I'll make a motion, now we increase lawnmower tires to five dollars. Uh, over seventeen inch to six dollars.
Ten nine.
Nine.
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah.
Right, yeah, to six, next one to nine dollars. Rims add two dollars. Tractor trailer sixteen dollars, tractor forty-one dollars, truck tires sixteen dollars.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So carry. Planning Commission, L D R T brand. Um, I just put it on there as a heads up, uh, the planning commission, um, met with the regional planning commission to talk about, um, a new brand is available to towns along the Long Valley Railroad. And further discussion along set when the planning commission tried to talk to the brand administrators too and found some ideas off, and the ideas that they liked the most was a composting twelve. Um, he asked about connecting to our present, um, subject system, but we have plans for the schoolhouse that, um, is pretty much used up, and we have a cafe in there, so they basically just wanna know if they should try to continue to move forward. It's not due till October, but I would hate to have them fill out an application if the board was interested in their facilities. There would probably be some maintenance, and I am not sure what that is, um, what that entails or what that cost would be.
Yeah, I think whether the composting pilots do require maintenance, um, and that would fall, uh, as I understand it, right, that would fall in the town.
It would.
To supply that maintenance. And I mean, that's the only thing about it that makes me nervous. You know, who's gonna do that?
Where's it gonna be located?
I thought about that too. I, I reached out to him and asked, um, I haven't heard, you know, I assume it has to be on town land. So what town land are we talking about? You know?
This over here.
Right, um, we don't really have any town land available. Um, by the garage or.
No, no, I mean by this.
Yeah.
Meaning to whatever you want, color.
Trailhead parking.
Trailhead parking, that would be ideal. As long as you don't find people using it, that's not using the trail.
So Seth, um, Seth worked on the same project idea up in, um, in Smuggler's Nudge, they renovated and all the Barrows Farm or something way up there. So he's familiar. I'll reach out to him and, um, ask him to bring some more detail to the board in terms of maintenance and try to find out where the, um, planning commission was thinking of putting this. But I just wanted to let you know about it. We don't have to make any decisions tonight.
Yeah, if you're talking supplies and the chemical, because you're gonna have a, I guess it's called a cake. Make it decomposed, plus toilet paper, plus hand sanitizer. You don't know what you're gonna run into.
It's, yeah, yeah. When I worked for the park, I serviced the, uh, Green River Reservoir uses them on their remote sites. And I remember it being, uh, it's a project, and it's something.
But do they have to be cleaned out?
Yeah, they, they need to be cleaned out, like, first of this, you gotta have a chemical balance.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta be watching that all the time. Seth, I know a lot more than I, but I do, that's why I hesitated when I heard this, because like. Who's gonna do this?
Well, he did, he, he was fair in saying that there would be maintenance, um, associated with this, so. We will find out some more information, um. Like I said, it's not due until October, so I'm, they haven't really started applying, they just wanna. Run it by us a little bit. Community barbecue coming up quick. Bought some signs, um, they were a lot more than I anticipated. I ended up buying signs that we don't have to throw away, but have a little thing on the top where. You can change the date to use them year after year. And. That brought the price up, but I, I couldn't see buying them and then just throwing them away. Last year, Bernard bought the corn and donated it to us, but he isn't going to this year. So we need to come up with some money, I know that, um, two fifty was designated to the event.
So corn, two hundred years of corn?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
It's seven dollars a dozen.
Does he have a source?
Yes, he ordered it.
Oh, he already did.
It's seven dollars a dozen, and he will go and pick them up, he said.
Just we have to pay.
Right. So we're about, um. Two hundred and twenty five dollars to order. Two people have offered donations, I don't know how much, I'd like to put out a donation jar, you know, just on the table, even though it's free.
Yeah.
Um. Maybe to offset some of the cost. Otherwise, we'll need to come up with some money somewhere.
Okay. There's not a.
So I've reached out to everyone, um, uh, the only thing I haven't done is, um. Would you be able to reach out to the sheriff last year, remember they came and.
Yeah.
And walked around and I think that would be good and, um. You know, or some parking and stuff.
Yeah, I'm right.
And, um, I know you're working that day. We'll have to set up.
What time are you gonna be setting up at?
I came around last year, I think. And I probably went home. It's just a matter of, um, you know, putting the tables out, putting up the. Uh, pop-up tents that we have, I don't think everyone will have one, but. I think I have five of them, one, two, three, five of them.
I might be able to get here around two, that would be the best.
Okay, you know, bringing out, um. You know, garbage cans and all that little stuff, and setting up the pop-up tents and.
Yep, I know, I'll be around to do it, yeah, I'll see, yeah. Can we get the road crew to maybe move some technical cables?
I've spoken to Dylan about that and, um, you know, some signage. So last year, we closed off the street. How did it work? I wasn't really out there, are we familiar? Last year.
We didn't really close it off, we just parked along the.
And were people able to get through?
You could, because we were parking along off in the main area on this side, I don't know about the other side, but a lot of people. Parked at the old bus barn.
Yes.
Up by the town garage.
Mm-hmm, they can always park it, yeah.
So there was quite a few, I think there was like fifty to sixty different cars in that area. Probably another twenty down through. Side of the road, I think some even parked at Steve, I think it was last name, Emmanuel. Down there, they parked a few.
Bishop.
Bishop.
So what I tried to do last year was, um. Have not, not really any room traffic, so people coming from Alamo or make them go that way. But it got confusing, I think.
You could just put detour sign.
Mm-hmm.
That, you could have the road crew put a detour sign by the bridge. That would.
Do you ever, do you ever forget the signage of last year?
Right.
Do you remember what he did? I can't remember, but he did it up here.
He did, we closed the road up, but it ended up, um, confusing people.
Oh.
Um, not knowing how to get in and. I'll need to talk to Ryan, he's the one that was out there and he took down some signs, he said people were getting confused.
My birdie.
Yeah. Alright, I think, um. I think it's gonna be a great night, the weather was good so far.
And I will bring a little bit of relish.
Okay.
You might get some ketchup and mustard.
Alright, thank you.
And does he want plain mustard or honey mustard?
Whatever someone would put on a hot dog, I guess.
Probably, it's not gonna be great for all.
No. It's too hot.
And green mustard is not your preferred style.
And your microphone is here.
Great.
There we go.
Anything else?
I think so.
Not, I'll have a motion to adjourn. Seven more.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, the, the figure.